Right. Oh. Or Tracy.
Tracy.
Okay, I'll be okay and we'll get started. Um, good evening, everyone. Like to call the the special meeting of the Board of Finance for Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty five to order. Uh, we have one item on the agenda this evening, and that is to consider and take possible action on a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen for a property acquisition. Um, I do know that the Board of Selectmen uh met this morning and uh approved uh the property acquisition we're about to talk about. And also now it's already gone out on social media with a press release and everything else, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna hand the floor over to our
Thank you.
First selection, I know.
Uh, and I will be bringing uh Gary and Kevin.
Yes.
Discussion relatively quickly.
Of course.
Uh, I'll give you, I'll try to give you a little Reader's Digest version of what's happened over the last uh three weeks, it was three or four weeks. Uh, when the Stonehouse property uh became available for sale. Um, we had some conversations with the Land Acquisition Commission Committee in the person of uh Gary.
Matt, that's the, that's the Moore's property, sorry.
Say that again?
You said Stonehouse.
I'm sorry, you're right, Stonehouse, the Moore's property. I've been referring to it, I've been referring to it as five oh five. Uh, and then somebody called me out on that this morning, said, are you sure it's five oh five? Um, but nonetheless, um, we uh, we reached out to the current owner, uh Jim Cohn. Uh, who I think many of you know, has been very active in this community for a long time. Uh, through uh Gary and John Turutis, and he indicated yet that in fact it was uh for sale. It wasn't just for lease, it was also for sale. Uh, and we learned uh that he had a bona fide letter of intent from somebody else who was interested in the property. Um, we have uh had conversations with amongst my staff, uh and amongst and with Gary and the land acquisition folks about acquiring this property, uh and this is not really prior to it going up for sale, but uh subsequent to that.
There's about a let me just, yeah, a year, a year ago, land acquisition theorized that acquiring this property and the two salt marshes uh that are between this property, a piece, a strip that we, we actually own and Jacob's Beach would be an ideal situation for the town to just sort of control that entire uh sector. So I mean, this, this wasn't a shock. To me, it was a shock that it arrived so suddenly.
Right, and, and, and that conversation uh started uh along the lines of our former first, our former town planner, Jamie Stein, who had a positive idea that we could potentially create continuous contiguous access from the town marina over to Jacob's Beach if we were to acquire uh one of the properties or an easement uh and that, and potentially an easement on the other one. So we had some, we had, we, we, we were actually actively negotiating with the property owner on, on seaside to purchase that parcel, uh which didn't, didn't materialize, it didn't, it didn't come to fruition. But nonetheless, let's, let's back up, uh let's go back to uh this, this situation. We had uh some, a preliminary meeting with uh Jim Cohn on, it was a Friday before Christmas, I think, right? Where he indicated to us that, yes, he had a bona fide offer in hand. Uh, and he had a, 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 an offer with a purchase price. Purchase price is three point two million dollars, um, and the sign of good faith. He allowed me to see the email with that offer uh in the email from a, a local developer, uh which will remain uh anonymous at this point. Um, and so it was, it was something that we uh immediately started talking to staff about. Well, what's, what's the impact, what kind of development can happen there? And there's, there was enough concern that that could be a pretty significant development down right on our waterfront. So uh given the history we had, we've had with that area and the idea of creating some contiguous access along the shoreline. Uh, but more importantly, uh we we pulled together a, a meeting for the Board of Selectmen, an emergency meeting, the Board of Selectmen for month, that following Monday morning at eight thirty. Uh, and the board was convinced that we needed to at least make an effort to see if we could acquire that property so that we could protect access to the coastal area, uh the, the shoreline, which is so uh, so in demand or unavailable to so many folks, and it's a significant parcel. Um, I don't know if you, any of you had an opportunity to walk on that parcel, but it is a, it's either one point seven or one point nine uh acres down there. Uh, especially every portion of that's wetlands that leads out, uh but nonetheless, it is a, it's a significant uh presence on our marina and our uh, and also contiguous to that marshland uh that affords our, our Long Island sound. So uh we went, started going back and forth with Mr. Cohn, and um he had indicated a preference and a potential uh favorite nation posture if the town was interested in it. Uh ironically, in uh the previous administration, uh Gary McKelney and um uh Charles Calverna had had a conversation in this room.
This is the chair.
That chair years ago about Jim's willingness to sell it to the town of Guilford. Uh, but I think the difference then uh was the, the manner in which it would be proffered. Uh, but not only that, but well, what else are we gonna do with it? It's gonna, we don't wanna be in the restaurant. So uh fast forward to uh the last couple of weeks. It makes an awful lot of sense for us to take a look at preserving uh that piece of property and restoring it to a more natural state, uh and uh potentially uh not having eight to ten condominium units on our, on, on that piece of property. I'm not saying that's the motivating uh part for it. The motivating part for, I think, the Board of Selectmen is to continue to allow community access to the shoreline, which is at such a premium uh here in town. And also, this is a generational opportunity, right? How often does a property like that come up for sale? And uh if we were to fail to act uh on behalf of the community, uh I, I think we would regret it. And they might write some things about us after we're all gone and say, why didn't they think about just preserving that, that down there? So we've come up with uh some terms and conditions relative to the uh, the letter of intent. And uh Gary, you wanna walk through uh this part of it?
Yep. So the letter of intent is written, and I'll summarize it fairly quickly, but uh the price, we would pay, A, a price of three million dollars if we close uh before April fifteenth, and that, you'll understand in a couple of minutes why, why the different timeframes. Um, but what we wanted to do is make sure that Jim understood that we, we absolutely would purchase this. So at, at the end of it, there's an absolute requirement to purchase. Let, less than, you know, a default provision, which would cost us something. Um, at the sole option of the purchaser, we can extend this to September first, twenty twenty five, but the price goes to three point one million dollars. That was picked because the day before Christmas, um Kevin, Janice and I had a conference call with uh three uh folks in the DEEP who are involved.
DEMUS, which is FEMA.
Okay.
From Emergency Management.
Okay. I'm not good at acronyms. And uh we were given a, a great deal of enthusiasm that, that this property is eligible for a FEMA grant. FEMA has paid out substantial funds on this property over the years, and they have a program that allows the acquisition of properties that are costing them a lot of money. It's easier for them to put up money to get it bought than it is to keep paying out the insurance. Uh, so in, in the background of this, uh is the, the possibility of up to a hundred percent of the purchase price could be covered by a FEMA grant. In this room, we all know that, you know, that's an outside, we have to prepare that, that we could write a check, but we could conceivably get that amount uh from FEMA uh in, in a grant. Therefore, the delays are to allow us to, A, understand what the grant conditions are, what we have to do to perform to, to get the grant uh written, which will be written by the, the state folk. Um, and therefore, they said four to six months. Uh, we sort of arbitrarily added a couple more months on it to get it to September.
Was the date September first?
First. Uh, which is the first extended closing date. If it goes that far, we owe, we owe three, three million one. At the sole option of the purchaser, we can go to a uh, a second, second and second extended closing date of November fifteenth, but we have to put down a hundred and fifty thousand non-refundable. Again, we, by that time, we will know kind of where the FEMA grant process is, and Matt has something to add to that, but let me, let me go through the details at this point uh so that you know this. Uh, the non-refundable deposit will get, would get applied to the closing of uh price of three point one. Uh, in no, D says, in no event shall the closing date be extended to any date beyond the second extended closing date without the written consent of both parties, which consent either may refuse or not. So if we have a lot of facts on the table and, and, and uh Jim has to help us with the grant. He act, act, has to be the owner, he's the owner of the property that's applying for the grant. So this will be a cooperative effort. Uh, I have no reason to believe that he won't be fully cooperative uh in, in the process. But if it's dragging, we have the right, you know, we can sit down and say, hey, okay, Jim, we'll, we'll give you another hundred and fifty. We wanna put it off for another month to whatever, whatever the facts or the, the apparent facts might be at the, at that time. So that, that's the way the deal um is constructed. Um, where we sit now is uh we, we have committed that we would get it approved from our, this deal approved from our standpoint, meaning the town's standpoint. Uh, Selectmen approved it today. Um, we're talking to you guys tonight, the town meeting is scheduled for the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth in the evening in the big room um of, of the community center. Uh, and there, there is uh the uh referral to the P and Z will take place, maybe this week. Uh, they have a large agenda, if not, it could, it could get pushed till February fifth. Um, but uh by that time, we will have all approvals in place, and we would go to a P and S. Um, so uh that's the deal. Uh, one of the keys obviously is, is the FEMA grant, and uh I'll let the first selectman talk to some alternatives.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna talk to a couple of things. There are, there are at least three levels of potential funding for this project. Uh FEMA being one of them, as Gary mentioned, uh FEMA has a stated policy of uh paying up to a hundred percent of the acquisition cost for the property. We don't know the particulars relative to that. Is it uh appraised price, is it purchased price, what, what is it? We have a series of questions in front of FEMA right now about those Kevin and Janice have been working feverishly to try to get to that, that level of detail. Um, there are also DEEP uh grant funds that we think we maybe have the opportunity to, to tap into for coastal resilience, coastal, uh Kevin could talk to us a little better, but there are some, there are some opportunities for us to get DEEP funds as well. Uh, not only that, but there are opportunities for us to get DEEP funds for uh further preservation and potential development of community access to the shoreline, to those, to, to those, those resources. And lastly, uh I, I already had discussions, and we have the complete support of Senator Cohen and Representative Rader uh relative to going to uh the state legislative leadership for potential bond funding, either for acquisition, demolition, uh or creation of some kind of other uh park or structures there and/or um to uh, to, to, to facilitate the plan of acquiring some of the other properties along that beach. So we've got, we've got, we've got a bunch of folks lined up, uh willing to work with us to try to, uh to, to try to get funding. One thing I'm, I'm not sure you mentioned is uh the demolition costs. Um, the FEMA grant uh will also cover demolition costs for structures on the property that are in the floodplain that have been creating the repetitive loss scenario that FEMA has been paying out uh over time, so we may get that taken care of as well.
Uh, Matt, clarify, I, I think that's a, a separate grant, but right, but it is, but it is. So there may be, you know, we may, as you, as Matt said, we, there may be multiple applications floating through here.
Right. Um, I, I just wanna talk, before I talk about the Board of Finance's role, I wanna talk a little bit about uh Jim Cohn uh and uh the veracity of what he's willing to do. Um, I am convinced on the, I only attended one of those meetings, it was a preliminary meeting, but uh hearing what I've heard from uh Gary and from John Turutis, who's uh I think online, uh who has also been working with Gary on negotiating this, for those who don't know, John's our economic, economic development coordinator.
No, John's been crucial.
He was a good cop.
Right, I was the bad cop, he was the good cop in this whole thing, so.
But.
John was extremely helpful.
It is clear, it is clear to me, and I think also to Gary and to John, that uh Jim was willing to give us a hometown discount because uh going back to the eight years ago when he was in this room, he thought that the town would be the most appropriate entity to own this property uh going forward.
At three, at three point eight.
At, at. Three point eight million, right. Um, the one thing I just wanna bring to your attention, I don't mean to, to, to lecture, but the Board of Finance's role here is not to approve the purchase. The Board of Finance's role is to approve the financing mechanism, which we anticipate, if we do not, if we anticipate potentially using some of the uh, the bond authorization for open space and uh the open space. There is, there are, there's two point five million dollars in that uh ten million dollar bond authorization that would fall for usage for municipal purposes. And clearly, this would qualify if we were to create community space there.
Isn't it different classes?
It's class C.
Right.
Yeah, A and C.
B and C.
A and C. This falls into class C, uh and we have two point five million dollars in that ten million dollar bond authorization available. Um, so that's what we are uh asking the Board of Finance to approve is the potential use of some or all, if necessary, of that category of uh bond uh availability uh for this purchase. Um, let's, in, in the worst case scenario, if we were to have to pay three point one, one million dollars for it, yes, we have the two point five bond authorization, but we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the land acquisition reserve account.
It just jumped, it jumped up, we received a hundred and seventy four thousand from the
The Ballistracy.
Ballistracy, which pushes up to nine point two or nine hundred and twenty thousand.
Right.
Nine hundred and twenty.
So, so we have, we have plenty of, we have plenty of money available.
Can I, can I insert a political statement, which is that one of the aces, the, one of the aces we had in this, as we have in many of our negotiations, is that we can prove that we have the funds availability. So once we go through the approvals, then we don't have to go out and raise the money.
Right.
Which we don't always use. Uh, for instance, with the Ballistracy one, we use some bond funds, but then got a grant back. In this case, we may, might be able to time it, so we don't close until we get the FEMA grant, although
But, and, and.
I, I wouldn't bet on that, but it, you know, it might be possible that we don't have to do it, but as, as a negotiating point, we are funded. And that, that makes a difference when you're.
Well, we, we will be funded once the, the board gives us.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, once we get all our approvals, we have, we have access to money.
So why wouldn't we, unless that's the plan, why wouldn't we work hard to get, be able to close by four fifteen so that we own the property, and then the town of Guilford goes to FEMA to get the grant?
Thank you very much for that question, I was just about to address that. We don't understand the grant process to the degree that we are comfortable to say, if we buy it, they'll reimburse us after the fact.
Yeah, okay.
There, so many of the state and federal grant programs do not allow for
Purchase.
A purchase, uh to, to reimburse someone, a, a community who has made the purchase, i.e. identified the funds to do it themselves, and then have gone ahead and do it, and now are gonna get reimbursed. That is the reason we have put the, these provisions in that say, we're not gonna close until such time as we understand what the provisions are. And we are, at this point, under no obligation whatsoever to buy this property. We can walk away from it, that's, there's language in the uh letter of intent that allows us to say we're, 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 we're not gonna do it, all right? Um, and that is specifically designed to be able to take advantage of any of the provisions in the, in the FEMA grants, the DEEP grants, relative to possession of the property you are looking to have funded. Is that right, Gary?
Hmm, so do we have that right through April?
We have that right till September, well, actually even, even. If we're willing to, if we're willing to give up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars after September.
We can walk it.
We can walk it anytime.
Megan, I, your hands up, I see it.
Yeah, uh related to the FEMA grant, so who's applying for the FEMA grant?
Say, uh, say that again?
Who is the principal applicant for the FEMA grant?
Uh, that is, we are determining that at this point. Uh, we've literally, the day before Christmas, we started this conversation with FEMA, submitted a, a number of questions to them, and we're trying to understand exactly what those parameters are. Gary did mention that uh it might be uh the property owner who applies for it. Um, the question for us, for us is, well, what if we, you know, i- if, if it has to be him, then we have to change the uh, the, the purchase and sales agreement to reflect whatever uh FEMA is gonna require.
Okay, and then is this funding available through last federal fiscal year's budget? So is it, is it dependent on a continuing resolution or?
We, 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 we don't know at this point, and that's, that's why we're working with FEMA to determine exactly how, what's, what's available. FEMA tends to operate outside some of those traditional funding mechanisms, uh because they have allocations uh to, to drive as much of their potential loss out of the system as they can. Uh, and it is avail, it, our understanding is it's available to municipalities. It's also available to commercial property owners themselves directly.
No, it's actually, the town has to be the
Sponsor.
Sponsor.
Sponsor, right.
Has to be the sponsor for it. The state's actually the applicant to FEMA.
Okay.
And the town is a sub-applicant to, to.
Is it a contract? I got it, so you're subcontracting with the town of Guilford, the state, technically.
Yeah, the, the trick, the trick is to get the, the grant funds to the buyers, which are the taxpayers.
Yeah. So I guess who's, I guess my question is, like, then who's writing the application, is it the state?
The um town engineer, which is our FEMA, our, 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 hasn't, our, our flood manager.
Right.
Um, is working, will be working with the people at the state um FEMA office, we're putting the grant together.
Okay, so are they then submitting it to the state, and the state is submitting it on behalf, uh like, are they go, cause every state has like a federal administrator, so I'm assuming that you're using DEEP because they're the state administrator for federal funds.
It's DEMUS, isn't it?
DEMUS is for this one.
Okay.
For Emergency Management.
So they're technically making the application?
To, to FEMA, yes, as, as far as we understand at this point.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I'm curious, what is the town plan to do with the property to extend access to the citizens of Guilford?
Well, this is, as yet to be, to be determined, we were, actually, we've talked about this, uh there, there could well be a competition uh on potential concepts to what to do with it. We've had conversations internally about uh obviously taking the building down, because that's the repetitive loss uh piece. Uh, we don't, uh, we are not at all interested, at least this administration is not at all interested in being a landlord for a restaurant that is gonna continue to fail because of uh the sea level rise and storm and flooding, et cetera. Um, yeah, it's, it's one thing to continue to hope that someone's gonna keep renting it and putting leasehold improvements into it and, and, and allow it to go on. But we don't, we don't think that's the highest and best use. We think creating some kind of arrangement for public access to that facility, uh either in terms of a pocket park, a potentially food truck court. Uh, we already have a tenant who will be a draw to that area for food. Uh, so there's a, there's a variety of things that I think could happen there.
Boardwalk.
Boardwalk, and well, access to the boardwalk is obviously another one of those things. Uh, but also just picnic tables all along, I don't, if, if anybody's, everybody's been down there, there is, there's beautiful access along the marsh area, but Gary's got pictures. So, so Jonathan, it's basically to create uh the opportunity for the public to actually enjoy the uh. If you think about it, we have so little access. We have Jacob's Beach, we have a small portion of Chittenden uh park. We have a Chaff and Fitch Island, which is limited. We have Barbara, we have Barbara Pine Beach over there, and then we have a couple of the shell fishing beds.
On Trolley Road, isn't it?
Yeah. Trolley Road, and a small piece on.
Short of the Guilford Green, the, the dock area is one of the biggest landmarks for the town of Guilford.
Absolutely, and one of the biggest draws.
Right.
And there's only one toilet in the, in the marina, so you.
Right.
Right, you've got restrooms there.
Bob, that's a, that's a great point, one of the things that we've talked about is there is already septic uh, uh septic capacity for that facility today that is on the, it is in the parking lot behind the old Stonehouse Restaurant. And that's one of the ideas, you know, we'll need to talk to FEMA about whether they would allow us to have a, a more permanent uh restroom facility for that whole area down there. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see. There, there are a lot of things that we need to determine that uh what FEMA will allow us to do that, to, to that property, once we acquire it with their funding. They may have, they may have restrictions on it that we are not willing to live with. Um, and.
But we have a backup plan to fund it if we're not, we're accepting the, if we don't like the restrictions that FEMA may or may not put on the town.
Exactly.
One of the questions.
Well, so we have a concept. To use a current term for, we don't quite have a plan, but we have a concept.
But, but, but we can be assured that a restaurant and residential development being there is not in cards, and that would, one, one of the questions I was gonna ask is just on the, you know, I, I'm sure maybe would probably some community members would be asking, okay, you're taking it off the tax rolls.
We're, currently, currently, we're taking, currently, we're taking, we would be taking at the, at the top end, eighteen thousand dollars a year in taxes off the top. However, there is a provision in the lease for uh the Lobster Pound that uh the, the, the current proprietor pays twelve percent of the property taxes, uh the overall property taxes for the entire parcel. That parcel is not split up, it is one parcel, uh one tax bill, and the um, the, the Bart Manzi uh from the, for the Lobster Pound, uh in his lease, uh is obligated to pay twenty percent of the uh, the property taxes. So we would look to continue a similar arrangement.
How long is that?
Uh, it was a ninety nine year lease, I think, signed in nineteen ninety two, so.
So this intention is not to go anywhere.
Sixty seven more years.
No, no.
Well, I know the love of the, of the, of the, of the Lobster Pound for, for the community, so.
Well, it's not, it's not only the Lobster Pound, but we, you have to realize is, that's one of the few remaining fisheries uh are fishing this along the, along the, this coast. I don't think Madison hasn't left anymore. We have a couple of commercial slips uh as part of the marina, uh and then this, this is a standalone that he has access to.
I think it's important to also mention the federal channel goes all the way into the marina area, all the way to the sluice gate, and the sluice gate is also important.
I, I don't mean to correct you, but we own a portion from the, the harbor gates, basically, uh where the slips are. We have to pay for that. Uh, we've gotten reimbursement from the feds for the channel, which.
So I mean, the channel.
The channel, that's right, but we own to this, we own from the, the first couple of uh, uh slips right to the sluice gate, and that's our responsibility to drive that on an annual basis. All right.
So this piece potentially, from a commercial perspective, could become, could remain a restaurant? Could it become a hotel?
Uh, potentially, yeah. There are a significant number of challenges relative to the various regulatory bodies and uh building in uh expand, extending building in a FEMA floodplain. Um, from their regu, their regulations could be problematic. There are some challenges related to um, uh. Um uh maximum uh footprint on the property. Uh there are uh significant challenges related to elevating the building. Cause if you increase the value of the building by more than fifty percent. Uh then you have to raise it eleven feet above uh above sea level. Um so there are some some pretty significant challenges uh to do that. We don't think that they are uh that that there's a definitive answer as to whether or not. Uh a developer could put uh you know, eight to ten or twelve condos there, uh we don't know whether that could happen or not. And we are not opining on that at all, but um the driving force of this is to preserve community access to the shoreline.
And we don't know what the possible developer who made an offer.
No, no.
Well, I mean, if you consider that, a developer could change the whole neighborhood down there. You know, a development of condos or, you know, a hotel or anything like that will change the whole. I don't know, a Vista, the whole, the whole neighborhood.
Let's not forget, there are two other pieces of commercial property down there. Um the former Rothberg property, the current Rothberg property, it's the old Stonehouse. And then the uh Rothberg property that's on the other side of the Sluse Creek, which was the. Duskin. Oh, it's Duskin, yeah, you know, Bob, Duskin Publishing, so. Um it ostensibly, you know, we 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 might be back at the same table. A couple of years from now, uh or a couple of months from now, whoever knows, and saying. Uh do we wanna pres, do we wanna entertain preserving those uh for community access as well?
Yeah.
Environmental, any concerns and environmental concerns?
Uh yeah, obviously, uh building, building, uh increasing a footprint in a in a flood plain is significant.
I I meant more, I'm sorry, I meant more.
Septic.
Um just.
From from our standpoint, with the concept laid out.
You know, hazardous or any.
I mean, there, I mean, there's, who knows, there could be a potential of an underground storage tank on the property, there's no environmental.
Okay.
No, no. Done there yet.
No, no.
And in terms of septic capacity, in full disclosure, um several years ago, when uh Mr. Cohen owned both properties. Uh he granted an easement to himself on one of the properties. For septic disposal on the other property, so in the parking lot, the the Stonehouse parking lot. Uh there resides the uh the septic system for the mooring property. So that's a perpetual easement uh that he he granted uh to himself or to one property to the other. It has the capacity for thirty-four hundred and fifty gallons per day. For anyone who knows the code, a bedroom requires a hundred and fifty. So do a little bit of math. From a septic capacity, that's twenty, twenty, twenty-two bedrooms. In terms of septic capacity that uh could be, could be handled uh from that that facility, that that potential property. Now, we'll say, we gotta go back once again, we are not opining on the permitting process in any way, shape or form. Alright, but we feel this is a significant enough uh opportunity for the community to say. This is what we want, as opposed to this is what could potentially happen.
Can I ask a, uh I don't know what kind of question it's called, but just being devil's advocate, what what are the possibilities that? This building that we're thinking about dem- demolishing has some sort of historical significance? And in some way, shape or form that could prevent, I'm sorry, somebody had to ask it.
No, it's.
The answer is, I will be happy to talk to our good friend Joel Helander to determine if it does have some significance. And if there's any portion of it that could be preserved to be used for the community access uh uh opportunities that might exist. I am also pleased to 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 let you know that it falls outside the purview of the historical.
Somebody falls under ninety-degree notice demolition.
That's right, that's right, but it's a good question, so, and and we would, of course, you know, I I. You you've, you grew up in this town, it was the what's, the Captain's table, right, and you know, uh how long was it a restaurant before that, who who knows?
I, you know, don't take this as fact, but the assessor sheet claims that this was built in nineteen sixty-two.
Well.
Don't take it as fact, but that's what's on this sheet.
Well, that's 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 that building.
That's when they started keeping records.
Right.
Wow, Anna.
I will, I will, I will also point out that if you take a look at the structure that Bart operates his business out of, look at the date on the, on that one. Eighteen ninety-three. I put that to the attention of the assessor last Friday, that 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 record is being corrected.
What, what is the vision of a pocket park?
Pocket park.
Trying to envision how much access citizens will have, you know, how much benefit it'll bring to Guilford. I mean, I wish you could put some kind of marina building or hotel there, actually, I would prefer.
Well, uh the hotel would, uh the hotel would significantly change the nature of that area. And uh some of us don't think that that's necessarily appropriate, we're talking about possibly a pavilion, benches, tables. Cut, yeah, access, access, there's kayak access. Kayak access to the back end of the property, up to uh up to the sound. Um we're also potentially talking about a food truck court where you could have four or five stalls for food trucks. It's it's a seasonal opportunity, uh the 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 footprint on that building is pretty big. Uh and and that property, I was actually down there earlier today. And uh while we still need to be able to negotiate and and provide access for folks getting to uh the Lobster Pound. Uh including uh the 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 owners of the Lobster Pound who are bringing trucks in and and, you know, shipping materials out of there. Uh but, you know, I I think it's, I think there are not a lot, that there may be some limitations, but I think creativity will allow us to build something down there. That could be pretty well uh uh pretty attractive for folks to come down. Hey Matt?
Yeah, Matt. John, uh I'm just gonna throw in my two cents, I'm gonna pull my Dockmaster hat on for a second. So ev- virtually every weekend uh in the summer and very often during the week. Uh the parking lot at the Marina is jammed with people coming down to the shore. Uh they're, they're looking at the view, they're taking up all the parking spaces. At times we have to fend them off to uh reserve enough spaces for the slipholders in the marina, so. There is a lot of traffic down there and I think a, a pocket park or uh another venue um for those visitors to to go to. Cause not all of them frequent the moorings, okay, so uh it'd be access for them. Uh the other point I'd like to make is that uh by increasing the boardwalk space. Potentially, we could think about uh increased dockage for transient slips or. We have, and I was looking at the list this morning, three wait lists down there at the Marina for residents to get in for slips and it's about a five-year wait. So off the top of my head, there's probably seventy-five to a hundred residents waiting for slips. So it's, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking about how how can we build a business case around the pocket park and what could come from it? Either from food truck revenue, uh uh rental of the space, additional slips, so on and so forth, so I just wanted to comment on that.
Thanks, Ed.
Yep.
Anyone else? It's your meeting, what am I saying that for?
I was, I was, I took the words right out of my mouth. Um but the board of selectmen has met this morning and and approved, and then our role is to approve financing.
Approve the the potentially utilize.
Potential use financing.
Here's the bond, the bond proceeds, just the bond proceeds.
And then this is, uh you know, going to the town, a town meeting.
Town, it'll go to town meeting on the twenty-eighth uh for a discussion and and a vote. Because uh disposition or acquisition of property uh has to go to town meeting.
And even after all of that, we could decide otherwise.
What?
But this is, this is putting the, in the approvals in in motion.
In place so that we, so that we can negotiate a PSA in good faith to say we have all of these approvals in place. Cause without those, we can't negotiate in good faith.
Are there any other properties that we had in mind for this bond, this funding that we have currently in the land acquisition fund?
The two point five?
Yeah.
No.
As as you probably recall, most of, most of the has been on open space uh for that part, which is seventy per, seventy-five percent of the uh.
I just didn't know if this was uh leapfrogging over a potential, something that was being worked on, you know?
Yeah. Nope.
I, you know, I would, I'd just say for the record that. Uh if somebody preferred, we, the town always has the option of going for a singular bond for this particular property, if that's. Uh but I think between the. And I will never say we're gonna get a hundred percent of the grant, but it would not appear that we're gonna have to use all of the. The two and a half that's available for B C properties, particularly since we have a significant balance in the land acquisition fund.
And that was always, that was the idea behind the the bonding.
Right.
Was that we would have the money available for when something came up, that we could act quickly.
Yep.
And not have to go through a whole process, yeah.
But we are gonna have a long process, this is gonna, it's gonna take the rest of the year to put together with FEMA and all of that, so. I mean, I I guess for the sake of accuracy, that's an option to to go to with a sp- specific referendum for this property. Not that I, not that I believe we're gonna have to, but it is an option.
And that gives us the opportunity to, in good faith, negotiate the uh PSA.
Yep.
That shows that we are committed to doing what we're saying we wanna do.
Anything further as I sit here and try to craft a motion?
Uh for the record, I will also say that uh this has been recommended by the land acquisition fund. Not that, not that we have any.
Not a shocker, Gary.
Surprising.
Uh believe it or not, there was some uh um. There was some concerns expressed. Not unlike this concern about are we using up the entire two and a half? Uh but again, this this had been part of a discussion that we have been having all along about preserving this entire sector.
So um so if I'm looking at this, Jeff, got that correctly, if we acquire this piece, then there's gonna be a narrow strip that's still privately owned.
Correct, yes.
Between town property and this piece, and then to the south of it privately owned, and then we get to Jacob's Beach. Right.
And there's a strip, this strip here we own.
Right, but we don't own this strip.
The twenty, eight foot, or whatever, twenty-five foot.
Right, as as you know, there are a variety of mechanisms we could use to acquire that, negotiation being the first.
Exactly, exactly.
This uh will require negotiation as well, but.
Yep.
This is now owned, this is turned hence, turned over.
Oh, okay.
Is no longer owned by the individual that we were trying to negotiate with originally to acquire that piece of property. So we are hopeful that Mr. McKelney.
Charm will. Well, the last guy wanted, we thought we should pay a million for it, but the the assessor should charge him a dollar and a half.
That's a, that's a conversation for another day.
Remind me again, on the two point five we're talking about, is that, what, that's from?
That's class, that's the classy allocation on the ten million dollar bond authorization for uh land acquisition.
The land acquisition fund.
Yeah, a couple of years, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's a couple of years, it's gone by, yeah.
Time flies when you have.
Twenty-two or something like that, I think.
Yeah, well, the irony is, it took us, what, twenty years to spend five million?
Took us twenty-three years to to use up the five million, but it's a tool. Cause you have it, and then he gives you time to find additional money, get grants, do other things.
On the unique aspect about this. Uh prospect is that. It's come on the market relatively quickly, and we had to respond quickly, and that's what we're trying to do. I mean, if I'm remembering correctly, this shortly before Christmas that we started the negotiations and here we are. January sixth, talking about setting up the mechanism in place to use town funds to acquire this, so. And I don't know when it went on the market, but there's already somebody who's expressed interest in putting it, putting an offer in and securing it.
Yeah, Jeff, your your point is very well taken, we are traditionally not comfortable moving this quickly as a governmental agency. As I'm fond of saying, we typically move at a glacial pace, but this is a different animal, this is a, this is a commercially available piece of property. That are, in a key location that already has attracted the interest and an offer from a private developer. We don't necessarily have the luxury of doing this the way we typically do things, which is to analyze through paralysis.
And to come up with the, I mean, the downside is because we've got to move so quickly, some of the questions that Mr. Trotto is.
Right, he's absolutely right, we don't have the answer.
Scope of the projects is, you know, you can't really say what you're gonna do with it because you've got to secure it first.
And 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 Jonathan's questions are absolutely right, you know, what 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 is it gonna be? I can't tell you, but what can it be? I think it'd be something wonderful for this community, I I have no doubt uh that we can't, uh we can, we can't come up with. A a design, a solution, and a use for that that will significantly enhance the quality of life for many people in Guilford.
I would say, a place for food trucks and picnic tables doesn't really. It's a good access, I think the commercial potential is even better. Just that if it was just a restaurant, I think it would serve the community better.
Well, a restaurant, a restaurant up eleven feet.
Sitting in a flood zone.
That's the problem.
The one thing about that site that I think all of us can uh re- remember is that there've been. At least four or five restaurants that I can recall, who have tried to take advantage of that location. And make a go of it, and some have lasted longer than others, but none of them have really had any sustained success, so.
And when they do, they get knocked out by an event.
And it takes them longer to re- rebound.
You wanna do a hotel and a restaurant, come up with nine million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and buy the Duskin Building, is that the restaurant on the first floor?
That's on high ground, and that's on.
That's on high ground, you put a restaurant there and three floors of of housing, of rooms.
Well, I mean, it's fair to say also is even if that, even when that property is somewhat dry. It's wet. You get a bad high tide, you can't get out, your your access is cut, so now it's an access issue, so, yeah, you can develop it. But then you've got private, you know, development that's now cut off from being able to access with.
Well.
To John, to John's point, in fifty years, we may have marina slips all the way up to uh the Harriet Peters Stone House.
Right. I mean, the other reality is you put housing down there, now the town has a liability because every flood. What do we do with all the people that are living down there that can't get out? So, I mean.
May I ask a quick question?
Certainly.
The the purpose of this exercise is just to to secure the location. We do not yet have to determine, we don't have to handcuff ourselves or commit to a a plan at this point, is that correct?
That's correct.
Alright, so uh I think job one really is just decide to to, whether or not to go ahead with this. Uh investigate all the, all the parameters about how the funding works and the and the grants. And leave ourselves the room to make uh an educated determination of the best use of the property later on.
Is it, y- y- and to to that point, I mean, worst case scenario, or, you know, the nuclear option. Alright, let's say we buy the property, it's a town, and we can't figure out a good use for it, we could sell it.
Eventually, yes, you could sell it.
Right, I mean, that's the, that's.
That's a good.
I guess I would, I would say for the town, that's the worst case scenario.
I have a question, when is the last time the town ever did sell a property?
Oh, Gary, every once in a while, we sell these small little.
We sell small pieces from time to time, about a bit.
But they're inconsequential, Jonathan, it's usually, we've acquired that.
Right, it waves roads and stuff.
Yeah.
Orphan lots for the.
The orphan lots, foreclosed pieces.
Maybe it's perception, but I always feel like the town's footprint's just expanding.
I was preserving, it's preserving spacey.
Town's population's expanding.
That, that's true. That, that's true.
All right, so, can I just ask a que- to, to follow up on Bob's comments? So we don't have to make like a ton of decisions, other than. We're gonna investigate all these options, but does FEMA, if you get the FEMA grant, I imagine that there are restrictions on that.
But that's, you're exactly right, that's what we're looking, that's what we're looking to determine. Those restrictions could include what happens to the existing lease for Bart's business on that property. Um, can it continue to operate? Um, what, uh, how much will they be willing to fund? As there is currently a discrepancy between the current uh tax assessor's appraisal and what we are gonna pay for it. Would FEMA fund one, the, 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 you know, the appraisal price? Or will they feed, or, or will they fund the purchase price, or something in between? Uh, we are planning on getting an appraisal on the property ourselves, just to have a current appraisal. Uh, an independent appraisal outside of the assessor.
Which we'll need for the grant.
Which we need for the grant application anyway, um, so, uh, we are. Literally, Megan, in the discovery phase relative to uh what the FEMA grants will allow or not allow us to do. Uh, and what kind of funding they're gonna have, um, and, you know, we're, we're making no promises. This is, which is why we're asking for the board to approve the utilizing the two-point-five. Uh, at, at, at a minimum, and we will, we'll come back for further, with further recommendations if we don't receive any funding. Um, I, 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 I'd be willing to bet, uh, maybe a steak dinner at Prime. That we'll get some funding somewhere for this project, uh.
Okay.
The open space bonding authorization, it seems a little odd that the property has development on it, has a building on it.
It's, it was, it's not open space funding, it's a municipal bond. Where seven point five million was dedicated for open space. And two-point-five of the bond was set aside for municipal needs such as. Um, pa- uh, active parks, um, like Bennett Park and stuff like that, or. Um, developments like this down the shoreline or public works facility, so two-point-five was reserved for.
Municipal use.
Municipal uses there.
Schools.
Schools, anything along that line there. So it's not really open space bond, it was a municipal.
Nickname opens.
It's a nickname, but it's a municipal, um, bonds where the majority of it is open space, but it was a. Fraction available for this type of use.
I'd be a little more comfortable with if it was an open space and there wasn't development there already. Seems like an intrusion on some commercial development that's already there, that has potential. And I thought the restaurants served the community very well.
It did, but it also.
I miss it already.
It didn't tell it didn't.
So do I.
But it was also very costly for the owner, you know.
Yep, they were definitely frustrated.
Well, that's a, that's a second restaurant ownership group that has decided they couldn't sustain themselves in that area. Because of the challenge, well, Stonehouse was the other one, right?
I also have to imagine too, the getting insurance.
Oh, that's exactly.
Repeated claims, uh, being able to sustain, like you said, sustain the business. And even get insured flood insurance would be next to impossible.
An- anecdotally, anecdotally, I understand that the ownership group uh for the Stone House. Um, despite as successful a business as it was, uh, could, uh, were, were not returning. Any equity payments back to the ownership group, despite as successful they were because of the, the, uh, the cost. To come, to renovate and the, uh, and, and the cost for the flood insurance.
And, and every time you reopen, you start over.
Right.
And after Irene, the Stone House was closed for close to eleven or thirteen, fifteen months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so I just wanna comment on the restaurant, the state of, the, the healthiness of the restaurant industry. Uh, I think it's significantly changed in the past year. Um, there's, there's significant staffing issues, uh, I think we, we all see the. Uh, help needed, help wanted signs uh posted at our, some of our local restaurants. We also lost two, um, two restaurants recently in the last, I'd say, two weeks. Um, one was Rocco's up on uh Route One. It closed down, and uh Farina, uh Italian deli up on Route Eighty, closed down.
Yeah.
So I think that, you know, the re- the challenge for a restaurant in that location, um, and I was having this discussion with a friend of mine the other night. Who's a long-time Guilford resident, and he said, you know, it's kinda out of sight, out of mind, you know? If I, uh, do I, do I have to go down there, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm gonna pass Char and Lemon, I'm gonna pass Prime, I'm gonna pr- pass Quatro's. Yeah, it's a great location, but, um, again, I think with the cost of the property, the cost of renovation. The cost of doing business today, I think, um, the, the time of a restaurant being in that location has probably passed.
If you ask, we know from our business, if you ask any restaurant where they'd like to be located, they'd say they'd like to be located near other restaurants.
Yep.
So if you have a unique restaurant down there, it's, well, they're finding out, they found out, it's just didn't, didn't, didn't pay out. When they had the balance of the Stone House across the street, it was more dynamic, and more reason to go down there.
Yeah, and I think you see other waterfront restaurants in the area along the Connecticut Shoreline are open seasonal and they shut down. And they're, they're able to, to manage and afford and survive their business that way, but I don't see it in that location.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, but I, so, the, I take it the town becomes self-insuring on the property? Or nearly so.
Yeah, we, we would, we would.
Which, which would, which would have a bearing on any infrastructure.
Bob, I apologize, our P and C stuff is uh done through Kerman.
Okay, all right, but still, it kinda have a bearing on, on infrastructure we decide to put in or not.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, I, I, I would not foresee any significant infrastructure there. Um, you know, uh, I, I would, outside of maybe the uh bathroom facilities. I wouldn't expect four walls on anything down there.
Or you just leave it as an art gallery? Empty it out.
Exactly.
So, um. We could also have discussion after a motion, but, um, so it's looking like I'm. Me, I wanna make sure I get the wording right, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve. Um, actu- actually, motion to, uh, entertain a motion for the approval. Of utilizing two-point-five million up to ten million dollars from the land acquisition fund, and I believe I should say category C bond fund. Allow for the financing, acquisition of the property at five oh five Whitfield Street.
Second.
Any further discussion or possible corrections on that motion?
I think, so it's two-point-five million dollars that we're approving use from.
From category.
Bonded.
That's all you have to prove, that's all you have to prove.
Yeah. municipal use, not towards the open space.
Perfect.
And I know Tracy's on, and she's taking notes, and she'll do a wonderful job in crafting that motion, and I could help tomorrow.
It'll sound, it'll sound better than it said.
Is there any language in the bond authorization that would make this, uh, it's not possible?
It would have to meet the criteria of the.
Somewhere.
Not that I'm aware of.
The only language is that we had to commit for any.
Uh, town, town council has already taken a look at this, and this fits the criteria for.
Confirm that, okay. Okay. Um. Any further discussion on this? Otherwise, because we have people on screen, um, just make sure it's clear, I'm gonna do a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Um, Megan Scanlon.
And I approve, aye.
Veronica Wallace.
Aye.
Mike Ailes, aye. Jeff Beatty, aye. Bob Hartman, aye. Jonathan Trotta.
I make the comment that I don't think the town has a use that may compete with the commercial use of the property. Um, but I do think that they can use the bond authorization to, to buy it.
All right, so it's an aye.
It's an aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Um, okay, so. That's, oh, sorry, everyone, I know you wanna stay here and you wanna talk about more things, but. Uh, there's only one other item on the agenda, it's not even on there, it would be a motion to adjourn, do I hear?
We adjourn, so one second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you, Tracy, thank you, everyone, for joining.
Thank you.